City Council meeting to order. I have the invocation will be led by Krista Rizzi and the pledge allegiance be led by Mr. Schroeder.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of being gathered here today to do the city's business on behalf of our constituents. We ask that each of us be guided by you in the decisions we make that will affect others and not by any personal agenda or ego. We ask to be humble in our disagreements and that we never forget, we are here to serve the people of this beautiful community. Father, we ask for your protection for all of our first responders, those serving in our military and all of their family members. We ask that they be brought home safely each and every day. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Present.
Councilmember Biggs.
Present.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gremmel.
Here.
Councilmember Nesser.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor?
As a reminder, all items on the consent agenda will be approved with one motion. If a council member wishes to remove an item for further discussion, the request will be made prior to approaching approving, excuse me, the agenda item and move it to new business. Do I have a consent agenda motion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. It roll call.
Councilmember Biggs.
Yes.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser.
Yes.
Councilmember Gremmel.
Yes.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Yes.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Thank you. Awards and presentations and proclamation. Presentation for 25 years of service for Stephanie Green of the Apache Junction Library. Pam?
Pam?
Pam.
Pam.
That would be you.
So sorry. We didn't think we were right in the beginning, so we were whispering. Pam Harrison, Library Director, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am so honored to present to you Stephanie Green for her 25-year service award. Stephanie began working at the library at the age of 18, right out of high school. And she worked at that time in the circulation department. And when I came to the library in 2014, I knew right away that if I had a question, Stephanie was the one to talk to. In 2015, I was honored to have her interview for the youth department and I was her supervisor for the past five years. And Stephanie is just a natural with the public. She is loved by parents and families across the community. The kids love her. She runs the teen advisory board group. She has teen events every month and gets lots of teens in the community to show up. She's just amazing is the only word I can use to describe her. And I'm so glad that she is the first employee I've had the honor to present a service award to.
Thank you, Pam. You can, you can sit, yeah. Have Stephanie come up now. Sorry, Stephanie, this is where we start to have a little fun. Everyone, this is Stephanie Green and is a good friend of ours, a good friend of mine. I've known Stephanie in my time here. She is a pillar. She's a pillar in our community. We see her everywhere. So it extends beyond her time and energy and talent at the library. If you want to know something about AJ High School, I can ask Stephanie. Our kids have grown up together there. If I want to know something about AJ Band, I know what to, or know where to ask. She is a huge supporter of so many parts of our community. And so I can't be more honored and delighted to be able to be associated with her and have her here tonight and to be honored, rightfully so, with 25 years of service. So first, I want to give her this certificate and says, congratulations on reaching 25 years of service with the City of Apache Junction. Stephanie, here you go. And then as part of this, our service award program, she receives 40 hours of paid time off. You got to use them. I know. And that's a trick. So about to figure out a way Pam to this and her time. And then, and then we also have with deep appreciation and thanks for your 25-year service, a big plaque. So Stephanie, thank you. So I don't know if you would like to say a few words. We'd love to have you say a few.
Thank you. I love my job. So being at the library, so thank you all so much for this. I wasn't expecting a plaque. Come to the library. We have lots of stuff to do.
So Stephanie, one thing before you leave, tell us one major change in 25 years. I mean, you've seen so many things. I know you've basically ran our, yeah, our youth program. You've developed it. Anything you want to highlight there?
Um, wow. I wish I knew that question. Okay, LibraryCon, that's my baby.
Yeah.
Um, I've been doing it for six years. It's kind of like, you know, Comic-Con, but in the library. And it takes me months and months to plan it. And I love it. And I was really sad I didn't do it last year. I made it in before COVID hit. One week in 2019, I was able to do it. But yeah, that's my, that's my good one. That's a big one. It's a lot of planning.
We are so grateful for her. Any comments?
Stephanie, you look like you're 18. Where did you put in 25 years?
I thought you were like eight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I have a couple of proclamations here. First one is the Constitution Week of September 17 through September 23rd. Whereas September 17th marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by a Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. Whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commence, commemorate this occasion. And whereas Public Law Number 915 guarantees the issuance of proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitutional Week. Now, therefore, I, Chip Wilson, do virtually have the authorization vested in me as Mayor of the City of Apache Junction do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23rd as Constitutional Week in Apache Junction as our residents reaffirm the ideas of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787. I'll come down there.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm sorry to tell you that our Bregent, Peggy Mansu, was able to come tonight. And so I'm Karen Barks and I'm the member and the Chair of the Constitution Week. And you have, some of you have been here a lot, have seen me many times before. This is the 234th anniversary of the Constitution, which is still the shortest governing document in the world. And it is also the document that has been in effect the longest. The preamble is a wonderful introduction to the Constitution and I handed them out to you tonight. Anybody else wants one, I can hand them as I leave. As it embodies much of the idealism of the Declaration of Independence and the truth of the Constitution. The three most important ideas that are involved in the preamble are, first is we the people. We are the first and the only constitution that at that time who had ever thought that we the people mattered. It was usually the king, but we were different. Second are the six broad ideas that the Constitution entails. A more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and to our posterity. And the third is that the author's intent that this is a legal document that is lasting for posterity. America's 250 is happening in 2025. That's not very long from now, is it? The Declaration of Independence is considered the U.S. birth announcement, we call it. Important is for us to teach our children and our grandchildren about the history of this country and to understand and to know the foundations of our freedoms. This year, we are teaching about the Constitution Week to the 5th and 6th grades at Peralta Trail, the AJ Boys and Girls Club, and the AJ Senior Citizen Center. In addition, one of the 8th grade art classes is doing an art thing about the first, the Bill of Rights. Hopefully next year, we'll be back in all of the schools. We are not allowed yet to do that. My niece is in another state and is taking a high school American history class as a junior in high school. The teacher on the first day passed out a map of the United States without anything on it except the lines. And my niece said, they were asked to write down the most states that they could write down. These are juniors in high school. Very few could write more than five. Isn't that amazing? College students take no history classes. Some high schools do not require history classes. And few, but the college students that, what this man was talking to, said that very few knew that the 13 colonies original were on the, on the East Coast. They had no clue where they were. It's imperative that we help all of those we can with the knowledge of our history, of our government, and our enduring Constitution. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one. Before I read this one, I want to make a statement concerning it. When I found out about this one, I'd requested it, but unfortunately, it was after our last city council meeting. So, and our next one was not until tonight, which is past the date. And that's a proclamation for Second Responders Day, which was going to be September 1st, 2021. Whereas second responders provide support for the first responders and have served the community throughout the pandemic, helping to put lives back together during critical time of, of an emergency. And whereas the pandemic impacted the entire community and caused trauma and suffering to many and second responders who include in staff from both the public and private sectors have risked their health to provide support to ensure that people can then thrive in the face of adversity. And whereas second responders go above and beyond to provide numerous services to the public, such as in outreach to the public experiencing homelessness in the deadly summer heat, providing meals, wellness checks for homebound older adults, providing counseling and mental health services for those in crisis, providing assistance with housing search, stabilization, ensuring families do not go hungry, helping domestic violence victims safety plan so they can flee violence, providing transportation to medical appointments, assisting with securing jobs and finding unique ways to serve the public during the unprecedented challenges of COVID-19. And whereas many could not have survived the pandemic without virtual services provided by the second responders. Now, therefore, I, Chip Wilson, Mayor of the City of Apache Junction, do proclaim September 1st as Second Responder Day. JJ Underwood from the Parks and Rec.
A shirt and tie.
Yeah. Been recognizing. It's all cleaned up.
Thank you. Go ahead.
No shorts intended, please.
All right. Thank you, guys. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Like I said, please don't get used to this look. Hopefully, you won't see it very often, but thank you, guys, again. We really appreciate all your guys' support and everything you guys do to support us at the senior services. We're very fortunate to have, you know, a city council that believes in us and allows us to continue to offer the services we're able to during the pandemic. When we had to shut down, we had a lot of seniors who were wondering where they're, you know, where they're going to go and where their meals were going to be. And luckily, we're able to still provide meals. We did have to shut down due to being in the gym, governor's order, but we were able to still offer our drive-through meal services during that whole time and continue our home-delivered meals, which is like he mentioned, well checks and everything like that. So during the course of pandemic, we were still able to deliver out 15,000 meals out our front door and 17,000 meals through our home-delivered meal clients. So we appreciate everything you guys do and thank you again for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there's many other organizations throughout the community that have been involved in this as well. And we want to definitely recognize them as well. Okay. Regional intergovernment meetings and updates from the council. Anyone have anything they want to say? Yes.
I just wanted to remind everybody, we had our board meeting for the Apache Junction Community Development Corporation last week. Everything's a go for our October 9th Make a Difference Day. We have four projects. We're going to be replanting some of the dead plants over at Flatiron Park. We have a project on Smythe Neighborhood, the South Warner, Silly Mountain, and the Seroptimist Clubs are going to be repainting the bricks at the focal point that have faded. So we've got a lot coming up. We have a new website on Facebook. So you can find us there. You can click on a button and volunteer there. Or there's also a link on the city's website to the Apache Junction CDC. And you can sign up to volunteer there as well. Thank you.
Okay. First off, I'd like to say that the council attended the League of Cities Annual Conference. And it was an opportunity for all of us to go and, I would say, have an opportunity to talk to other city council members from other communities throughout the entire state. Those of you who don't know, there's 91 cities in this, this huge state. I come from another state that there's a lot more cities and towns in the state than there is for Arizona. But we were on the aspect of going in and talking to them and having some dialogue and seeing some of the things that they're working on. And it was a, a overall a very educational for us to bring back some of the information that they're doing. And so it was an opportunity. One of the other things I want to mention, unfortunately, this past month, we had an accident between an auto and a horse and rider. The accident was very dramatic and the auto hit the horse from behind and knocked the rider off. She ended up breaking her back and breaking her hip. And the last I had heard, she was still in critical condition. The horse was, you know, killed and was actually dragged several yards, which made it very dramatic in the aspect on it. As a result of that incident, and of course, the two riders that were involved in it, they had no, and this happened at roughly 8:30 at night. They had no markings on them. They had no reflectors on them or no, even no flashlights with them at the time. They were out pleasure riding in the full moon, which is quite popular sometimes in the, I was saying, especially in the summertime for a nice moonlight drop, ride. But I'm going to start working with the Superstition Horsemen's Association. And we're going to acquire some of these type of lights reflecting that, whoops, that can help. And also, we're working into getting some bands. This one's designed to put on your sleeve as you're out there walking. And it gives the driver of a car a little bit of advanced notice that there's someone out there. And of course, we're looking at getting some of these to be put on the feet of the horse, on the legs of the horse. So that will be down so you'll see the movement on it as well. It's one thing that we have a lot of horses in this community. And it's something that this is, I know of. There's been two horses that have been killed in our community since I have been involved. And one individual was killed. This woman is in, I would say she's very young, but she's going to have a lot of problems. And it's something that I think that with a little bit of, I'm going to say thoughtful usage, we can hopefully avoid some of these. Anyway, that's all I have for me. Managers report.
Your Honor, can I add, can I just add something? I just wanted to share at the League of, at the League Conference this year that Councilmember Evans and I had both received a service award. Interestingly, we've both served on the council for eight years. And prior to that, we both served on the planning and zoning for many years together. I just wanted to thank the community and I, and just say that it's been an honor to, to serve.
Thank you. I forgot that.
It's okay.
I was supposed to mention it too. City managers report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bryant Powell, City Manager, and congratulations to our council members for eight years' service. I have before me a couple items for a report. Back in June, we had our retreat. And one of the main items that we discussed during the retreat is customer service. We are a public service organization. And one of the goals that we and Matt, Matt and I talk about a lot with our department directors is to continue to bring that to our forefront of our minds. And so this last week, I received a letter from one of our residents regarding the MultiGen, the Recreation Center. It said, Dear Larry, please accept gratitude and appreciation from myself and many others in the MultiGen. We thank you for offering variety of classes, keeping the facility safe, limiting the size of the classes, and supplying fine equipment. I would also like to note the friendly employees, and this is the key, at the front desk, who are always welcoming, willing to help, and to offer cheery smiles. The instructor of some of the yoga classes is exceptional and deserves the highest praise. And so, thank you for helping to make Apache Junction Parks and Recreation Department the very best. So Larry oversees that crew and just wanted to bring that to our forefront, the continued emphasis on customer service. We received this letter. It says, Hello, Mr. Martinez. That's Victor. So Victor oversees code compliance. I want, I am Shannon Tanner and I wanted to express how grateful I am. No one wants to get a letter in the mail from code compliance. I mean, seriously, it's like red and blue lights in your rearview mirror. What happens next is most important. Understanding we are people and trying to live our lives, trying to do our jobs. This is where my gratitude comes in for Mrs. Kimberly Wilson, who is absolutely stellar. We were able to work together. She's very helpful and for me, kind. Human kindness is such a, in, in short supply. With her help and suggestions together, she was able to get me back on track and in compliance. Your Honor, I just wanted to make sure that we continue to make that in the forefront, both in our, in our forefront of our minds, but also in our staff, that we are continuing to do our best to, to provide that great customer service. Tonight, we're excited to have here with us our, our new fire chief, John Whitney, with us. He has been the chief here for a couple of months, I think. Chief, if you'll come on down, I'd love to have you. Of course, we have a really neat special presentation afterwards, but this is our great opportunity to get to know him a little bit. Maybe you do a little introduction, chief, for us?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for having me. Thank you to City Manager Powell for inviting me. I, my name is John Whitney and I am the new fire chief. I started June 1st with Superstition Fire and Medical Department. I'm a Arizona native. I started my career in the Forest Service as a wildland firefighter with the Prescott Hotshots. Worked for Royal Metro, most recently the City of Scottsdale, where I left as a deputy chief. I've been absolutely falling in love more and more every day with the community. I cannot tell you how great the staff has been in, in helping me in this transition. The city manager, Chief Kelly, everyone involved has just been phenomenal. So it truly is an honor. I know that this community is very proud of their firefighters and, and I honestly think that they should be. It is coming from an outside organization. It's incredible to see the dedication that the firefighters have to this community and to their service. Having seen, you know, numerous different departments, different agencies, I can tell you without question that we have the most dedicated firefighters to the community here in Apache Junction. And I really appreciate that. It's an honor to be a part of that. So I have a wife and a son who's just about to turn 13 on September 11th. So like I said, born and raised in Arizona, so love the valley, love this community. And, and it's just been a great, great opportunity that I, that I'm extremely thankful. And as a good guest, we brought gifts. So I'd like to invite Mr. Crossup from the Superstition Horsemen's Association. Before my arrival, the Superstition Horsemen's Association donated money for the department to purchase what's known as Fido bags. These bags are a, they're first aid and equipment for performing rescues with cats and dogs, essentially. So there's leashes in here, water dishes. There's even a specially designed oxygen delivery device that, that helps when you're, when you pull some, pull a, an animal out of a fire. So on behalf of the, the Fire Department, Superstition Fire and Medical, we want to take this very generous donation and we want to pay it forward to the city by donating a bag to the Apache Junction Parks and Rec Department, as well as the Apache Junction Police Department to help spread these great, you know, life-saving tools out in the equipment. So thank you very much, sir, for that. I really appreciate it. And we're going to turn these over to the city here. And that's, I just want to, again, thank you very much. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. There we go, Mayor. We got them.
Yes.
The police chief gave us pens.
There we go. What's that?
The police chief gave us pens.
Yeah, and we got pens from the chief. Yeah, we're in trouble, chief. These are weak, weak. Your Honor, tonight, we are really excited to have here with us Trinity Cole, who is our, come on up, Trinity. You're going to give us a presentation. She is Executive Director over at the Genesis Project and has a presentation. On occasion, we invite our nonprofit organizations to come in and give us a kind of an overview of their work. Trinity?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much for the opportunity to be here.
Let me pull it up. Al, do we, do we have that? Okay, let me pull it up from the agenda. I'm sorry about that, Trinity.
No problem.
One moment. Everyone can observe my typing skills.
Everybody can see it.
Yeah. No hiding. Okay. There we are.
Okay.
Am I going to click or error?
Yeah, just the arrow, the right arrow. Yep.
So Genesis Project is God's conduit to provide basic services to people in need by sharing food, clothing, hydration, and grace through personal interactions and occasionally provide emergency financial assistance. This is our mission. Our vision, we are the leading model for faith-based, community-focused service to feed, clothe, and hydrate anyone in need with respect and dignity, no questions asked. We are a no questions asked organization. If you come to Genesis Project, you will receive a meal. If you come to Genesis Project, you will receive a meal, you'll receive clothing, you'll receive services from our local partner agencies that are represented at the Community Resource Center. What we do, so currently, hot meals, we average about 137 per day, that was in May, we have seen that number hold steady the last couple of months as well. In addition to the hot meals, we provide a bag lunch, which is peanut butter and jelly or pizza, with a opportunity to get a couple grocery items and dessert as well, so they're going to come through the line and receive all those items. Shower vouchers, we are so excited that the Multi-Gen Center was able to open up, and we were able to start our shower voucher program again, where we provide a voucher to our guests to go get a hot shower. We are averaging about 12 vouchers per week, which is over 600 showers per year. The Clothing Bank and Hygiene Items, which is located in the Resource Center, we're see about 26 people per day that are coming in to get a clean outfit, any hygiene essentials they need, and whatever else we have available to them. Currently, bug spray is a big thing, so we're seeing a lot of bug spray, any of those items, if we have it, we give it out. We also are providing driver's licenses, state-issued IDs, and birth certificates. What we saw during the pandemic is many agencies were closing down and unable to provide those services, so we partnered with other side ministries and set aside some money in our budget to assist these individuals in getting their driver's licenses, birth certificates, all of those needed documents for obtaining work, obtaining unemployment benefits, so many things you need those documents, so we tried to fill that void during that time. Back in May, when this was created, we did do nine of that. We have done many more since then, so just this month alone, we've done three driver's licenses and two birth certificates, so we're seeing more and more people come for those things. We are a hydration and heat relief location, we give out four and a half pallets of water monthly, so we make sure that every single individual that comes to Genesis receives one bottle of water with their hot meal, and then anyone that doesn't have access to running water or clean water, whatever, they are able to get additional bottles of water as needed. Keeping people hydrated in the summer heat is an uphill battle in Arizona, so we do as much as we possibly can, again, with the things if we have and we give it out, same with water, we make sure that we give as many bottles of water as possible. We also provide employment and training opportunities. As Genesis Project, we employ four formerly homeless individuals and one currently homeless person, so it is our goal as an organization that we identify people that are looking for work and that are able to perform those duties, and we raise them up from that situation and employ those individuals first. In addition, we assisted three people filing for unemployment when all of the unemployment stuff was going on, and one person filed their taxes. So, in addition to food, clothes, and hydration, we do assist wherever possible to get people access to, I don't want to say benefits, but I mean, benefits is probably a good word, so that they can work towards rising above their current situation. We also have a library there at Genesis, which is super fun, just a kind of switch-out-your-book library, nothing official like we saw earlier. Computer access, we have laptops available to any guest that needs internet access, needs to print things, needs to apply for things online, any of that. We do have an onsite mentor who's available three days a week to assist with benefits or anything that they need. Sometimes it's just, you know, can you direct me in which direction I need to go? And so he's there three days a week to provide that, but also is able to help them complete those applications and get access to their benefits. We provide blankets, lockers, mail service. The mail service has been a tremendous blessing to our guests who do not have a physical address, that they're able to receive things such as unemployment that needed a physical address, access to cell phones, there's an assurance wireless program where they are able to get a phone, but it cannot go to a general delivery-type thing, so we are able to receive mail for our guests. We have an onsite nurse, and then our Community Resource Center, which, thank you, Council, was part of the Health and Human Services grant funding, so we have seen the Community Resource Center, as things have opened up, really blossom and bloom again, we're seeing more and more agencies there onsite that are willing and able to assist our guests. How you can help, a lot of people ask, how can we help? There are many ways, I won't read through every one of these things, but you'll see at the bottom, volunteering. Volunteering is how we operate, we're 98% volunteer-run, so volunteering your time and talents is a huge blessing to our organization. Also, we set aside Saturdays for special groups to come in, so you're able to bring a group of people, between eight and 10 people, you come in, I'll walk you through the entire process, you can prepare the meal, serve the meal, interact with our guests, it's a really, really great opportunity. I always say it's my favorite place with my favorite people, and I have yet to find a group that came in and didn't feel the exact same way, so it's a super fun way to just immerse yourself in what we do and really get a handle on that. We also are an Arizona qualified charitable organization, so we do qualify for that $800 per filing jointly. I always have trouble of how I need to explain that. So filing jointly, and then single filers can do up to $400 for our tax credit, so we have just multiple ways that you can help. Lots of ways to reach us, too, so these are all the ways that you can reach us, come see us anytime, P.O. Box, snail mail, phone, email, website, Facebook, any of those things, and we'd love to see you stop by anytime, between 12:00 and 2:00, Sunday through Friday, to receive a hot meal and just see how it's done. We'll serve you, too, no questions asked, if you're hungry, come see us. So, thank you so much for allowing me to share a little bit about Genesis, and I'd love to answer questions if anybody has any, if that's acceptable.
Yep, go ahead.
Can you explain that the showers, you actually do pay for those, that's at the Multi-Gen Center?
I'm sorry?
For the showers, that they are paid for, that's not a gift from the city?
Oh, no, 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 Genesis Project pays market value, face value, whatever, for each of those vouchers, yes. We purchase those vouchers for our guests to utilize the shower facilities at the Multi-Gen Center, it is not a gift.
I just wanted that clarified.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you for, thank you for allowing me to clarify that, I wouldn't have known, too.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Trinity, as the weather hopefully starts to change and everything, what do you guys need in terms of donated items? I know a lot of people are still weary and dropping off like clothes and things like that, so how can the community support you guys and your efforts right now?
So as we go into colder months, as far as clothing goes, we do accept weather-appropriate clothing. We do not have a large enough facility where we can store things, so as the winter comes, we're looking for winter jackets, closed-toed shoes, boots, jeans, those types of things. Right now, is it still warm outside? It's more than warm, it is still really, it is so hot. We are really needing men's t-shirts. For some reason, that's just been really hard, those are flying off the racks, so men's t-shirts, which also carry over into our winter months as a layering item, so men's t-shirts are a great need, and then men's and women's winter clothing are going to be needed sooner than we expect. As far as water, I mean, hydration tends to fall onto summer months, but we hydrate individuals year-round, so we can always use water, it's not just the summer need. Another need that we have is jelly, jelly is one of those things that you just don't, don't really think of, but we make a minimum of 60 peanut butter and jelly sandwiches every day. Jelly is a high-dollar item, and so we like to accept donations of jelly whenever possible, so I would say, you know, those are probably the top three right now.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Trinity, I'm really glad you did this here today, because a lot of people just associate the Genesis Project with a free meal, and you offer so many positive programs to help people get a step in the right direction. You're doing a great job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
Before I turn it to Al, I just want to say one thing about Trinity. One time I had a business owner call and ask, you know, love to talk to you, usually when they want to talk to me, it's usually about problems, and they said they didn't want to talk to the police anymore, they didn't want to talk, they wanted to talk to those who are working with, some of our folks who don't have shelter, and I said, "Trinity, can you please come to the meeting?" She came, and she listened, and she gave some great ideas, and was willing to go and do some things to help folks that are in that area, get the step that Councilmember Schroder was talking about, the right step, so I thank you for doing that, Trinity, and being willing to be a partner with us in that.
I think we should applaud them.
Yeah, thank you.
And thanks for coming in, too, and doing the presentation. My last item from my report tonight, Mr. Bravo, announcement of current events.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Al Bravo, Public Information Officer for the City of Apache Junction, very pleasant good evening to you. Just a couple of brief things to be aware of from the community calendar, if you will. I'm sure everybody knows this Saturday is a very somber day for most, if not all of us, as we mark the 20th anniversary of the September 11th attacks. This Saturday, in our gazebo, which of course is right at Superstition in Idaho, the Veterans Memorial Gazebo, there will be a community ceremony going on at 8:46 a.m., that's to reflect the time things occurred in New York and other places, that ceremony will be taking place just west of the police headquarters in the Memorial Gazebo area. As part of that ceremony, a new 9/11 memorial plaque will be dedicated as well. It is meant to be a solemn ceremony, it is meant to be a kind of an intimate one, but certainly the public is, is welcome. We are talking about Constitution Week, well, Constitution Day is happening on September 18th in the city, a free event scheduled from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Flatiron Park on North Apache Trail. There will be raffles and speakers, the Apache Junction High School Naval ROTC will present the colors, the AJ Kids Idol winners will be singing patriotic songs, bring a lawn chair, and enjoy the afternoon and evening on September the 18th at Flatiron Park. That is going on there, that's that. And also, of course, don't forget Founder's Centennial Celebration, just a couple months away now, coming up in January. The committee continues to meet on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at the library, and continues to look for sponsors for the events, and those are your community calendar for September the 7th, 2021?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Can I add one more thing on there that I forgot to get to Al? I just want to remind the public that on September the 15th, at VFW Post 7968, there is an elected officials meet and greet for your Pinau County representatives, and your Fire Board, School Board, Central Arizona College Board, and your City Council, so your, all, if not most, of your elected representatives for this area, including Apache Junction and Gold Canyon, will be there, so that is from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. again at Post 7968, which is next to Los Gringos Locas.
September 15th?
September 15th.
Do they have contact information, so they can send that out next time? I don't remember getting an email or anything.
It did go out.
Okay.
Public hearings, there's none, old business, there's none, new business. Agreement with the Advanced Chemical Transportation to house hazardous waste events. Heather, oh, there you are.
I snuck up on you.
Yeah, you did.
You're always trashy.
Okay, where is it at? Good evening, Mayor, council members, Heather Hodgman, Administrative Services Manager. Tonight, we're here to talk about our household hazardous waste events. So to give a recap, we do have an intergovernmental agreement with Pinau County, and that was approved in 2019 between City Council and the Board of Supervisors. Pinau County has agreed to contribute a maximum of $10,000 per event to allow the county residents to partake in our event. This is a map of the surrounding areas that are able to partake, and so you have everything east of Meridian, Pinau County just outside of our borders, as well as the Gold Canyon This is just a picture of our yard, where the event is located at our Public Works Facility. Our next event will be on Saturday, November 13th, and then we'll have one again on Saturday, March 5th, in 2022. So the event is only from 8:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. We do have a couple hundred per event, this is not possible without our PIO giving out the information. Our Police Department, they have been very involved with us for the last few years, helping us with traffic control, and of course, as well as our Public Works Department, without them, I couldn't do a lot of the stuff that's with inside our yard. So, we're recommending entering into an agreement with Advanced Chemical Transport to assist in both annual household hazardous waste collection events, and we are utilizing the Maricopa County Cooperative Contract, and the lump sum is not to exceed $80,000 for both events. Any questions? Yes, ma'am?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Where is it? I didn't read in here, it said, it didn't say where?
It's at our Public Works Facility, so it's on baseline just east of Idaho.
If you noticed the picture, you also saw the traffic backed up, too.
Yeah, it's quite a long line there.
We've changed that.
We have changed it, we've done a different traffic control, and so we basically have it more safety ways, where everyone comes right turn in, right turn out, and we've not let people go left out of our yard, safety is our main concern.
So folks are coming in off of Idaho?
They're coming in off of Ironwood.
Ironwood.
We have closed Idaho South, or they'll come off, and we've closed Tomahawk, we don't let them come down that way either, we went one-way in, right, out, right, left, down Tomahawk. And anyone in industrial, when they come out, they'll turn right on baseline and right onto Idaho, to keep that traffic flowing.
And Al, Al helps out with the businesses there, to know, and Public Works does, too, we've done this a couple times. You know, it takes a little while, but we're getting, getting it down.
Your Honor?
Yes.
It says at Pinau County to contribute maximum of $10,000 per event. Now, with our single trash provider, that 8% is supposed to go towards pay for this, is there any way to get some sort of amount that that's already being contributed through that 8% to this program here?
Do you want to tackle that, Matt? We, the whole thing is paid for through that.
Right, right, so that's your mark that pays for this, this event, yeah.
So the ability, so the ability to do two of these at 80,000 or 60,000 net, that pays for that. There was a time we didn't do, we weren't able to afford any, and there was a time we were, were able to do one, and then the costs have gone up, and with this, 8% were able to, to cover this part, and then the Pinau County part helps offset some of those costs.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, and I've got one quick comment, don't come in at 12:05.
Yeah.
Because they will turn you around, speaking from experience. Okay, do I have a motion for this?
Pay attention.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move the agreement with Advanced Chemical Transport for the November 2021 and March 2022 household hazard waste events, and the amount of $80,000 be approved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
Okay, discussion on amendments to the Apache Junction City Code, Volume 1, Chapter 5, Municipal Court.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. On one unrelated matter, I just need to run something by you real quick to ask for your assistance and something. I'm in the process of starting a Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee, and that's going to include myself, the court administrator, the prosecutor, public defenders, and a police department designated of Chief Kelly. What we also need to add is a victim-witness advocate, and a mental health professional who also works with the homeless or wishes to advocate for solving homelessness issues, too. We've had a hard time finding those two types of people, so I figured I'd ask you So I figured I'd ask you and ask the community, and between all of us, we should be able to come up with somebody good. So, and I think that would be very helpful in the long run for the Criminal Justice Committee system here in the city. So any suggestions would be greatly appreciated.
Your Honor, could I ask a question real quick?
Sure.
Is that, this advocate, is this, are you looking for?
Well, I'm going to have to, I apologize. I really do.
Okay.
That item is not on the agenda. All that's on is Chapter 5.
I'm just throwing that out there, asking for some help in the future. I wasn't expecting to have conversation about it. I'm just saying, if you got some ideas, throw them to me, please.
We can't talk about that because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, so Judge, if you could write something for Matt and I, then we could work through that process that way. Yeah.
Okay.
So regarding the part-time Associate Magistrate position, we don't need a full-time person. I can handle a heavy caseload, but we need someone to cover vacations, some weekends, sick or doctor days, and to allow me to keep up with administrative duties. This will also save the city a lot of money instead of having prisoners sent to Florence on my weekend's off, as we discussed previously. So the 19 hours or less covers the average number of hours a court has used for pro temps over the past 10 years. And now the Administrative Office of Courts has told us that we cannot, since we're not a charter city, we can't use pro temps. So the only way you can use is Associate Magistrate. So we have to amend the city code to allow for part-timers, otherwise we have to have a full-timer. And there's no way I want to have the city pay for a full-timer with all the benefits and everything when we don't need that. But the part-timer would be exactly what we need. Additionally, the Administrative Office of Courts recently said that if a one-judge court has a judge out with COVID, then they would take over the court, turn it over to the county presiding judge, who would then staff the court with pro temps and who are going to know nothing about our court system, nothing about our defendants, and aren't going to know our software system that we have as well. So we always need to have somebody of a judicial type that's around just in case anything happens, in addition to all the hours that we need them for, for covering everything else. Regarding the Judicial Assistant Position, becoming appointed as an Associate Magistrate, the person's going to be limited to handling simple and contested procedures. They would not handle criminal trials, orders of protection, injunctions against harassment, or contested criminal motions. This person's going to spend very little time as a judge or Associate Magistrate. It's only to help cover things in more of dire emergencies when we're shorthanded or, you know, if two judges are out, or what happened if both judges got COVID or something like that, then we're not going to have to continue days and days and hundreds of cases. We can just put someone like that on the bench when we need to as well. But that person's going to be more of an administrative position and supervising other employees within the court. But they'll also have that ability to do these duties if you ever need them to. Anybody have any questions?
Anyone got any questions?
Makes sense.
And I think you'll see that Joel made sure it was real limited on the amount and scope of duties that person has. So they're not going to be able to rule on contested criminal cases, or do criminal trials, or do jury trials. It's just things that are something that that person can clearly handle, and they're not going to be confrontational or, you know, problematic in any way. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I have a motion?
There's no more.
Mr. Mayor? This will come back in two weeks, and that will be a public hearing because it's an ordinance changing the city code. And then we'd ask for approval at that time.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong.
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry.
Also, the appointments, provided that Judge LaSota will recommend to you certain people, that will also come back before council at another time. Because you have to, you would need to appoint the part-time Associate Magistrate as well as the Judicial Assistant.
Okay. All right.
And for timing purposes, process-wise, our goal is to bring it back at the next meeting, September 24th, if we can.
Well, to bring back the ordinance.
The ordinance, right, Joel. The ordinance portion first.
The personnel part is a different part of this.
This is the first.
All right. Thank you. Now we got that all cleared up. Okay, direction to staff? We don't have anything. Selection of the next meeting dates and time?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that an executive session at 6:00 p.m. for Monday, September 20th, and Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, be held in the City Council Conference Room located at 300 East Superstition Boulevard in Apache Junction, Arizona, and other meetings as necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Councilmember Biggs?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rizzi?
Yes.
Councilmember Nesser?
Yes.
Councilmember Greml?
Yes.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Unanimous, Your Honor?
I got that one right. Okay, call to public. I would like to remind everyone that the call to public is courtesy and not required by law. It is a time for the public to express requests, communications, comments, and suggestions. Requests to speak, forms must be completed and handed to the city clerk before the end of the city manager's report. All issues shall be presented in a professional manner without personal attacks. Under the open meeting law, the council cannot engage in discussion on issues presented, but may respond to criticism and may direct staff to follow up with the speaker directly or place this matter on future agenda for council discussion. There is a three-minute time limit for each speaker. And I have two, and the first one's Donna Carr.
Hi, I'm Donna Carr, and I'm an Apache Junction resident. First, I want to talk about what you said about the horses. And I guess I was a little bit of a wild child. I rode a horse down the middle of the road screaming, "Midnight Ride of Paul Revere." Cop pulled me over, told me, he says, "There's no taillight on that horse. So either you take it home, or I'm going to take the horse in, and then you're in trouble." So, but, yeah, putting taillights on the horses, like even on the stirrups and on the tail, I have seen people with blinking lights on the horse's tails. The other thing I wanted to bring up is, I guess I consider Arizona itself as a whole as being a little bit not caught up with everybody else. There's a lot of people who are addicted to drugs and stuff out here, and I know that Brayden has started nonprofits. And I don't know if someone wanted to start a nonprofit on this, but there was, on the East Coast, I'm from one of the original 13 colonies, and they had a thing called Marathon House. It was a nonprofit, and whether it was that you signed yourself in or a judge ordered you in, you could stay there for anywhere between one to two years. You helped to take care of the place, you helped to do laundry, to do whatever needed to be done around the house. Some places where actually the monks allowed them to use one of their houses on their property. So it's just something to look at, is to help people, not to give them handouts, but give them a hand up. I always believe in a hand up is better than a handout. And just to be able to get people back on their feet again, because some people actually can be saved, or, you know, some, I mean, are too far gone, but to try to help people. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Daryl Cross, 1018 North Acacia Road, Apache Junction. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. As you all know, Mayor Wilson talked about the tragic horse death. I was one of the individuals that helped Mayor Wilson on the scene. It's not a sight I want to see again anytime soon. Never would be great. S H A is an organization here in Apache Junction that does a lot of stuff for the community, as you know from earlier tonight. Tonight, I'm going to introduce and announce to the community that we are going to do a safety campaign for our horses and our horse community, our riders. We are going to try and get every single rider reflective equipment, bands like this, lights like Mayor Wilson have. We really believe that it's very important to get an awareness out there to not only our riders, but also the rest of the traveling public. All too often, we find that people speed pass horses, they don't slow down, they don't wait for a horse to settle down before they continue on. You know, it's easy enough to say, well, did you get a license plate? No, I was too busy trying to stay on my horse. So the other thing we would like to do is get with the city and partner up with the city and make sure that all of our trail crossings have signage. It's very important because a lot of our trails, our stepover gates, don't have any kind of signage whatsoever. And it's very important that we get that signage out there. I know funds are tight. We're hoping to try and pursue funds through outreach, through different corporate endeavors like SRP. We have a lot of trails that go right underneath their power transmission lines. And so each one of those stepover gates, there should be signage there at each of them. The other thing we want to do, too, is offer our deepest condolences to the owners of that horse and the riders that use that horse on a regular basis. We also send out our prayers and thoughts for the rider in hopes for a very speedy recovery. So thank you for your time tonight and hope to do some work with you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Any comments? Nope, don't see any, so I will dismiss the meeting. No, done.